Well, good morning. Appreciate you all braving the bad weather to come out today. Would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Beck.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to request Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings, Father. We thank you for the ability to carry out the business at hand, Father. We just pray and ask that you guide us and direct us in everything we say and do and think, Father, and we give you all the thanks and the praise for you alone deserve that. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee work session and city council meeting held on November 14th. So move. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 10th through the 16th. So move. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. We have none today. Item eight, unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3529 for Thompson Community Center and Jim Re Roofing Project. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to Midwestern Commercial Roofers Incorporated and the amount is $137,720. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for a traffic study to evaluate existing intersection controls along Broad Street and Chestnut Street from First Street to Seventh Street and the amount is $78,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Gadsden Elks Lodge Number 1314. This is to allow the city to use the parking lot located beside the Elks Club at 118 North First Street. The term is from November 1st, 2023 to October 31st, 2024 with automatic five-year renewals and the amount is $1 per year. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Second. Is there any discussion? Mayor Ford?
Mr. President, this is an agreement that the previous administration has done in the past that we agreed to pay the parking lot, they would agree to allow us to use the parking lot. The city's had a great relationship with the Elks Lodge and we appreciate them.
Thank you. I remember that. All right, any other comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is new business. I don't believe we have any new business today. Item 13 is department reports, committees, boards, any reports from our departments or committees. Seeing none, we'll move to item 14, citizen requests to speak. Mayor Buster Ford, going to come tell us about Thanksgiving reminders? And welcome.
Yes, yes. Wait a minute, you're not supposed to be here today. You're supposed to last week. That's okay. Oh, good morning, good morning.
There we go. Good morning, Mayor Ford, city council members. You know, it is that time again, the community Thanksgiving meal. You know, this is the 24th year of Gadsden having this Thanksgiving meal. You know, it doesn't seem that was a year ago that we served over 6,600 meals in one day. It is expected that this year is going to exceed that amount and the budget has been estimated to be about $40,000 that going to be needed to complete it. I'm going to, I passed out the flyers. I'll read from the flyers for anyone who may not know. So you're invited to join us in our annual community Thanksgiving meal. Our community Thanksgiving meal, however you want to say it. That's this coming Thursday, November 23rd at the venue. Community, come together for faith, food, and fellowship. There's no cost to anyone. There's a dine-in, that's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Takeout from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And of course, there's deliveries from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. For deliveries to go are volunteer opportunities. You can visit the website at comethinks.org, on Facebook, Community Thanksgiving Celebration for transportation need, call, you can call 256-393-8140. For more information, visit the website, comethinks, comethinks.org. The same phone number, 256-393-8140. You know, there's always a need for volunteers. I found out that it's never, it's never too late to volunteer for this great event. Things started yesterday, Monday, clean up, making a list of people, deliveries. You know, it has been my personal experience in politics that there are two types of volunteers. There's one who will eagerly and happily volunteer in each and every project that the city or the district has. But there's another one that must be invited. I found out those are the one that when you invite them, they enjoy being involved in the city and the projects that's been offered. So I think if anyone is lacking a volunteer, invite them in. You'll find out it's a great, great thing that now all of a sudden you have someone that you may need for one of your personal projects, but if you don't invite them, they're going to stay at home and not get involved. You know, I am celebrating pretty soon, I'm nearing 50 years of being involved, inviting, not counting my 23 years of elected office. So, so I'm still doing it. You know, there's no greater pleasure than to give a needed service to others. And I think that, I've been told that I'm the entertainment this coming Thursday. I will be DJing again for the, I think, I moved back in 2008 and I believe I started two years prior because I used to come down for Thanksgiving from Illinois. So I thank you and we'll all see you Thursday. Don't forget to volunteer. If you need anybody, say, "I need something to do," send them to the venue. We'll find something for you to do. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing and thank you for your service. All right. We'll now go to item 15, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Mayor Buster, thank you. I had a talk last week, the mayor's office decided to donate enough money to cover the rental of the venue, but I want to tell you how much I appreciate you and that association for what they're doing and your passion. And I do like your DJing. Wanted to tell you, yesterday, we had a ribbon cutting on the covered train platform at the Falls. A few of you were there and I wanted to tell you it looks phenomenal and we're putting TVs up in the corner so while they're waiting in line, we can advertise other events going on. I thought that was a good idea. Christmas at the Falls launches Thursday night with the new train platform. So Thursday nights Thanksgiving, but they open up Thursday night and we want to thank our employees for being able to put this on for the community. She said they'll have 3,500 visitors a night. Is that right, Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. Want to say congrats to our Titan football team. We're in the quarterfinals and we're playing Friday night at Parker High School in Birmingham. And I was able to witness last Friday night's game and got to speak to the team yesterday. And let me tell you, I want to put some shoulder pads on and then go sit on the bench. I'm afraid I get hurt, but I want to, man, I'm proud of Coach Ali Smith and the coaches and the players, the parents, the band, the dance line, the major, everybody. I mean, I just think they do a great job. If you're out shopping Friday, this is important for all of us. The fire department will be in front of the mall collecting money for Toys for Santa. We need money, please drop in the boot. They have their boots out. And it's also Plaid Friday. So for downtown, if you'll shop local this weekend, it's called Plaid Friday, but the firemen will be out with their boots at the intersection if you've seen that before. We had a great recycling week. The schools competed, thanks to Councilwoman Minatra put this on and Tina King, I think, y'all raised $400 in cardboard and taught many children about the importance of recycling. Everybody knows the Ford family likes cardboard, so I had schools calling me, asking me for my cardboard. So I tried to get it around. I think Euro Brown and Striplin are in a dead heat, so I'm not sure, you may announce who's going to win. We're naming the kangaroos. I think Mr. Moore left tomorrow, or next week on CBS to do the show in Birmingham. So we have winners, the schools participated in that, so they're asking us to come down there. They asked us to bring the kangaroo, but he's a little big now, so we might incorporate, Councilwoman Man Wilson to help us. The land bank is opening up with new rules, software has been installed. Rod Scott from our office has done a great job. One thing important to me is that anyone who acquires property is able to develop it and maintain it within a six-month period. So that means there are some rules the board has approved and will be enforced. You can't get land, bank property, if you haven't paid your bills to the city for anything like garbage, trash, nuisances, or liens. You have to be a responsible owner. So that's coming online, it's online now, but I want to wish everybody in the community, in the city, in the county, and our council people and their families, a happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for in the City of Gadsden and I'm thankful to be your mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. Let me first say what an awesome time I had in Atlanta on last week, taking classes and really just getting to know what other cities were doing and spending time with my colleagues. So I really look forward to implementing some of those things or taking advantage of some of the information that we received. And it's always good when you can spend time with people that you work with and really get to know each other and all of that. So I wanted to say that that was a good week, really enjoyed that. I've been asked by a constituent of District One, and bear with me while I try to navigate between my phone and my notes, for the 97th Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, which is held, will be held on Thursday, November 23rd. I think most people are familiar with that parade. The Macy's Day Parade will be led by the Alabama A&amp;M University Marching Maroon and White Band this year. So if you're connected to A&amp;M in any way, as an alumni or you have children there, this is big for Alabama A&amp;M, but they're going to be leading the band, leading the parade this year. And if you want to see that parade, it will be on NBC TV. And so shout out to the Alabama A&amp;M Marching Maroon and White Band. Again, they're leading the parade, so congratulations to them and take advantage of that if you are fans or alumni of Alabama A&amp;M. Starts at 8:30 on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. Happy Thanksgiving Day to everyone. Enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilwoman Latham mentioned, a great week last week. The National League of Cities, for me, is always all things housing, a lot of great sessions that I personally attended. Hopefully, we can come back and implement some of the things we learned. They're very informative, very educational. Thank you, Mayor Ford, for sharing about the land bank information as well. So always look forward to that. So thank Mayor Ford, the staff, and also the council, and just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a big road to the tide, both this week and next week. Road tide. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery, you're going to have to follow that, I'm sorry.
Oh, man. So I'll look, I'll start off by adding on to the wombs to these Auburn fans, road tide as we get ready for that great game this coming week. Also, add on to congratulations to the Gadsden City Titans football team, the band, the cheerleaders, everyone that play a part and that those young people being successful, the parents, all those that will be traveling, travel safely. Let's try to fill up that gas out of the stadium. I'm so unfortunate to make it in tailgate. We tailgated last game, got so many calls of wanting to tailgate, so we actually made tailgate in Birmingham. But I'll let you all know. And I want to also, while congratulating the football team, Coach Ali Smith and his staff, and again, the band and all those to play a part, but I want to congratulate the Gadsden City School System Schools and all those young kids from the elementary or from early education, Gadsden Head Start, to kindergarten, all the way to high school, on their academics as well as their athletic abilities to make this city live up to the name of City of Champions in more than one way. I want to commend the former city council member of this district, of District Three, Mr. Worthy, his organization on this past Saturday on feeding warm meals to 600 people and handing out 145 winter coats to those that were in need of something to stay warm with as we get ready to transition one of these days into some cold weather consistently. Asking everyone to please check on your grandparents or check on elder in your family or neighbor, making sure that their heaters are cleaned out, blowed out, fireplaces, things of that nature so that we can stay safe. Want to also give a big shout out to the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority on their community Thanksgiving meal distribution to those that were in need or those that needed within the housing and in the surrounding community for all that work, Ms. Tawana and Mr. Vassar, and the friends and volunteers that came out and assisted with that. Again, apology for not being able to attend. And all of the community efforts that are being put forth, having the announcement today on the community Thanksgiving efforts that has been going on for quite some time and all of those known, seen, and unseen efforts and organizations and people that continue providing, whether it's feeding, coats, socks, housing, and other resources to those that are in need during this time. Sunday, November 26, 3:00 p.m., until all meals are gone at 9:01 First Avenue in Gadsden, Alabama, right there at Twin City or where Twin City is on First Avenue. Myself, Councilman Larry Avery, and Chris Coates, who had a vision to give back. We're talking about a young man that has a story of complete homelessness and has been blessed and is wanting to give back in a manner of way that God has blessed him. And so there is a free chili dinner that is going on. Want to thank all the sponsors that are listed. If you go to my page on Facebook, you'll see some of those sponsors and then you'll have a chance to meet some people out there as we have music, giving away food, and other gifts that has been contributed to the effort. Finally, I will end with this, for me and I know for others, many others, all around this nation. I'm going to say it like this, it is in your weakest when his strength is made perfect in you. To all the families that are about to go and gather together around the table, there are going to be some empty seats or maybe an empty seat that was not empty last year. Like Paul, we know that this isn't physical illness that we are facing because the pain is much deeper than the physical, but we must know, like Paul, also, that our prayers are being heard most definitely when we feel that they are not. To be short and to end it, know that God's grace is sufficient unto you. So from the District Three family, from my personal family to your families, have a happy Thanksgiving and find peace the best way you can for those that you have lost in this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, in keeping with tradition, good morning to everyone except for the University of Alabama, specifically Nick Saban. I would like to remind everyone that in Nick Saban's first season as head football coach at Alabama, he suffered a terrible defeat to Louisiana Monroe and went on to have a successful career. And despite five of his seven victories that season being later revoked because of a nasty textbook scandal that resulted in their final, final record that year of two and five. Just want to, just want to make sure that's on the record. Now, having said that, move on to a much, a much more positive football story, which is Gadsden Titans. Way to go, guys. Tighten up, got a big game this Friday. Everybody's watching you, everybody's supporting you. Congratulations to Striplin. I had a great time getting to hang out over there and talk about recycling last week. Great to hear that they're in the running for the most cardboard turned in. I give myself credit for my dynamic speaking abilities that really lit the fire on that Also, it was mentioned that John Moore would be on CBS announcing the names of the kangaroos. I would ask that somebody please check that wardrobe. He represents the entire city. Let's just, just maybe make sure that somebody's looked at what he's wearing before he goes on TV. And I would also point out to Councilwoman Latham's point about the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, that's absolutely awesome honor for them. And side note, the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade is and always has been held during the middle of the day, along with the Rose Bowl and some of the most famous parades in the world held during the middle of the day, night and night. That's all I have.
Thank you for that.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Councilwoman Minatra?
I would just like to thank everyone that was involved in Recycling Week. It was a tremendous success. We will announce our winners next week. And I especially just want to bring to thank Will Matthews. Will Matthews is the recycle coordinator. He is the guy that had the idea. He told the entire Public Works Committee that there was a recycling week, a recycling day, and, and he spearheaded the entire thing, not to mention that I know he worked tirelessly because all of that cardboard that was collected had to be weighed by school by trailer in order to get the contest results. So Will deserves a lot of credit for what he did and we just thank, we just, we give thanks that he's there in that job. So we appreciate him. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody that came out for the ribbon cutting yesterday at the train platform. It's a beautiful structure up there. If you guys get a chance, go up there and check that thing out. Christmas at the Falls does start Thanksgiving night, but tonight they do have some little, little pre thing going on. It's, if you have a dog, or I think it's called Paws at the Falls, so you can go up there with your dog, your puppy dog, and walk around and check out the lights. I know they're still going to have it. I talked to Christina earlier, the rain's moving out, so we are still going to have that up there. I think it's $10 a person. It's a fun thing. I'll be up there with my dog and my wife, my wife and my dog. Let me, can we edit that, please?
You already stepped in.
I'll be, I'll be up there with my beautiful wife, Kristy Robinson, and our, and our dog based Thomas. Lord have mercy, this is why I don't, this is why I don't talk. This is why I don't talk. This is the reason why I don't talk. Anyway, we have, we have that going on. We do have that going on at the Falls tonight, just wanted to say that. Real quick, I want to end this real quick. Let's see, go Titans, road tide, and happy Thanksgiving. And I'm out. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman, and it's been nice knowing you.
Yeah. He'll be having Thanksgiving at my house.
I don't think Jason will tell her to watch, so that, you don't have to worry about that. That won't happen.
We all think, Nakalula Falls, it was, we were up there yesterday and it was just such a great event. That is such a wonderful structure, but as wonderful as that structure is, y'all, the employees up there are even more so. I know Mayor Ford talks about it constantly, but we have some great employees that work for the City of Gadsden at all, but we have some great employees at Nakalula Falls. I had a chance to talk with some of the train engineers and I told them, I said, "You've got the most coveted job in Gadsden. Everybody that I know wants to be the train engineer." We may have to take some kind of contest to see who's the train engineers, but it's a beautiful facility. The Falls looks great, the train is great, but the, just the, the, the way that the employees love Nakalula Falls, from Christina Richardson on down, they truly love their job and they love Nakalula Falls and it shows. So thank you to our employees for all that you do to make the Christmas at the Falls such a resounding success.
She's calling.
Collateral damage. Do want to congratulate our Titan football team and, you know, they're, they're playing, they're peaking at the right time. I saw a post on social media about Coach Ali Smith's, three years, I think he's been the coach now, and y'all, he's, he's getting better every year. Every year's better than the year before, every year's better than the year before. And that's the kind of growth and success that you want to see, is that it's done in a methodical way. He has a plan, he's working that plan. But what I hear from some of the parents and that I see is that, you know, it's, it's great to win, but he is making good, solid young men out of those football players. And I think we all agree that's more important than any W that we'll ever see on any win, win column. He is so invested and all of his coaches are following suit. He's a great leader, but he's a great leader of young men and he's a great motor of young men to make them the future of tomorrow to be great men. So I want to thank Coach Ali Smith and his staff for what they're doing to, to help our young men. And it also bleeds over into the rest of the school. Not to be forgotten is our Gadsden Titan marching band. They are in Philadelphia and they're marching in the Philadelphia Thanksgiving Parade on Thanksgiving Day. I'm not sure what network that's on or if that's going to be broadcast nationally, but I hope it is so we can see it. I'm sure we'll get to see it on social media. And I saw a post about that. That parade is actually the oldest Thanksgiving parade in the country, started four years prior to the Macy's Parade. So congratulations to the Titan marching band. I know you represent us well in Philadelphia. Also want to echo, we did have a good working trip in Atlanta with the National League of Cities. We all had many sessions that we went to. I too attended some housing sessions and you always bring back good information that we can share with the administration and our staff. We also had a night where the Alabama League of Municipalities hosts a reception and, you know, and it's fun to be from Gadsden, to be in those receptions because we're the talk of the reception. And it's due in a large part, Mayor Ford, to your vision and your team and things that are going into this council for joining in, how we're working together. I think a lot of places are jealous of Gadsden and so I think it's time that that happened and thank you for that. Thank you for that leadership. It, it's really refreshing to go to those meetings and people just come up and tell you, "Man, y'all are killing it," or "Man, what do y'all got going on up there? Y'all got everything going on." So it's, it's a real... So it's, it's a real honor to serve the citizens of Gaston in such a way that it's just bringing positive comments from, from other cities. Two other quick things, Salvation Army has begun to put out our kettles. So you'll see the red kettles. You can also either tap or swipe a debit card. We certainly need any and all help. Salvation Army is the only shelter in the five-county area. We, our expenses have really been hit pretty hard in the last couple of years due to the pandemic. And we have, as you've probably heard us talk up here before, a large increase of homelessness in Gaston. So any, please, when you're out shopping, when you see the red kettles, please, please donate. Any pocket change, anything, everything helps and the Lord blesses that money exponentially when you, when you give. Also want to just offer up a note that Robert Avery, former council member here for six terms, had a post on social media, so it's public, but he's in the hospital and has requested our prayers. So I want to ask everybody to stop what you're doing and say a prayer for Robert Avery. He's been very sick, he's getting better, but he still needs our prayers. So let's remember former and fellow council member of Robert Avery and our prayers this week. And with that, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and we'll see you back here next Tuesday.